Our new plaque says four thirty, so call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. George, can you get your?
By your head.
Jesus.
Our most gracious heavenly father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and we especially pray, father, for our servicemen overseas and at home. Also, our first responders, father. We also, little special prayer tonight for our farmers, father, because they're getting ready to go out there and and begin their planting season, and we just hope for good weather and safety amongst all of them. We ask, father, that you would be with this meeting tonight and that we would do things pleasing unto you. It's in his name we pray, amen.
Amen. Join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the menu? Not? Entertained a motion.
Oh, some of. Support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or nay? Motion carried. Brief public comment. If you'd come here and state your name.
Thank you. How is everybody? My name's Robert Backstrom, trustee of Fall Township. And I'd just like to voice my disappointment, if I will, over the, uh, material management planning. I stood here six months ago and voiced my thoughts on as this got started, that the townships, uh, I was afraid, I was afraid that the townships wouldn't get a voice in the planning process. And my fears have come to be realized. For six months, I waited for the DPA's office to send down information on what was going on. For six months, I heard nothing. And at the insistence of the supervisor, we finally got the plan via email. As I looked through it, I saw one spot on the committee that would be a voice of an elected township official. I don't know if that's happened, but I haven't heard one word from the county or the township about this plan. That means to me, the township has had no voice in this plan. And I'm afraid that if I read this right, township residents are gonna have two choices. Cremeside pickup offered by the hauler in their area, which would give that hauler reason to charge a fee, whatever they wanted, because they monopolized in my area, they, um, they have the only hauler. Or your other choice is you're gonna be to get to a recycling center. Okay, well, if that means a ten, twenty, thirty mile drive for a resident, your plan of thirty, I think it's thirty-five percent, thirty percent recycling rate, I'm afraid you're not gonna reach ten percent. So, again, if there's more planning involved in this, I think there should be more information coming down to the townships about this, how this is happening. We lost one recycling center in Maple Rapids. It's not in this district, but it was the only close recycling center we had for the township. They closed down because of lack of maintenance and people just throwing junk instead of recycling stuff. I'm afraid that's gonna happen in our township, and you're not gonna get the results that you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment? No? None? Consideration of the consent calendar.
Move. Or?
Moved by George, supported by Steve to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or nay? Administrators report.
Um, I just have a couple of things tonight. Um, just wanted to remind, building and grounds and permits will be closed on the twenty ninth um, for our audit, um, and the courthouse is closed on Friday for Good Friday. That's all I've got for tonight.
Okay, George?
Oh, my. Where do I start? Out of these months that this Monday is like the third week down for the first Monday and the second Monday, it's like it's really confusing. So, but we made it up. But starting on Tuesday, I should say. Let me get my calendar up here. Okay, it's Tuesday, the eighth. Uh, attended the, uh, Lafayette Township meeting. And, uh, Dave was with me that night. So I took part of his thunder. He probably wanted to say he was there. Uh, a typical meeting, talking about different things, uh. And, uh, so Dave got to meet all the trustees there. And then we went from there. We went up to Wheeler Township and attended the meeting there. And he got to meet all the folks there. Normal stuff, more normal things were going on in the meeting, so there wasn't much going on there. Uh, then we go ahead to the four fifteenth. No, they, yeah. The fourteenth, yesterday. I guess these Mondays are crazy. Mondays, I went to Hamilton Township uh, for their, uh, township meeting. Uh, they're rambling around. They got people wanting to rent their hauler already, and they haven't got all the finishing touches yet. In fact, they rented it out for Saturday. They don't have their, their stove, refrigerator, heater, or anything. They're supposed to be there Friday, so. They're wrong, but I tell you what, for a little township, they've done a lot. I really appreciate how they've been able to do that, so. And basically, that's, well, if I go backwards, uh, no, I'm all done. Well, yeah, I'm all done.
Tim, do you have any reports?
Um, well, on April fourth, uh, uh, Friday, uh, I said it was the first meeting. It was my first meeting. I think it was their second meeting on the opioid, uh, opioid meeting. And Liz Broddick is the head of it, and, uh, she's yet to spend any of the hundred twenty thousand. The other people had a lot of, um, information about drugs and drug abuse. Um, you know, we're concentrating on, um, treatment and prevention, but, uh, I, I stress really the main goal with addicts is, is recovery. Which, which does happen. Well, you know it does happen. Uh, committed to recovery should be, uh, the main goal. I said to continue to be transparent. Uh, this is a difficult problem which, uh, money doesn't really completely solve. You know, it's a complex problem, drug addiction. Uh, in fact, uh, if, you know, we're so enthusiastic and helping, we may, you know, you might enable, which enabling makes it make it easier to be enabled. But, uh, uh, but we should keep track of it and, uh, and analyze it, uh, year to year. Uh, when the money is spent, we won't meet again until the next year. And, um, so it's a hundred twenty thousand a year for eighteen years. The next meeting.
Is around that long, Tim, so we can go every year?
No. But, well, that's what it is. When the uh, okay. So, well, the um, we had a, a mental health meeting at the old, uh, Wright Avenue School. Uh, Mrs. O'Boyle is back from Texas. Um, they had a audit, a yearly audit like we do. Uh, and the, but theirs really went well. And it, uh, Roseland Prestige does their audit. It's the same outfit that does mine taxes.
And mine too.
Mine too.
Uh, and they they continue to talk about building a new facility. Uh, there's no problems, so.
That's it. Okay, Steve?
Um, since we didn't go over these the last time, in March, on the nineteenth, the ones at the Parks and Rec, basically, in that time of the year, they were just doing meetings, getting ready for things to get rolling. Um, the twenty-fourth, I was at Fulton Township. Uh, that was the night that you guys had mentioned about the you hadn't heard any updates, and from there, I actually texted, uh, Sheila about that, and then on the twenty-seventh, she sent, I think the thing you're referring to, she sent that to the supervisors, because I just looked at her email and it went to the Fulton supervisor. Um, and Fulton was going through their normal stuff that they're working on, talking about. They were working on budget issues that night, so we were there for a minute. Um, on the twenty-sixth, uh, George and I were at the Health Department. Um, nothing real earth shattering there. The doctor did do a report on the measles outbreak, which has nothing but gotten worse since then, but it was a good update on, uh, how it spreads and how contagious it is and, and, um, that sort of thing and how it um, is, uh, obviously, we have it here in Michigan now and fairly close, um, to us. On the fifth of April, Washington Township had their ribbon cutting. Dave and George were there um, for that. Uh, they have a very nice, their addition is very nice. They thanked us multiple times. I think they thanked each one of us individually, but they thanked us when they did their actual little program, um, because it was the, the ARPA funds that we, as a board, gave them that really kind of kickstarted them getting on the, they wanted to do something, but that kind of got it rolling, and they were able to secure some other funds. It's a very nice addition. On the eighth, uh, Jan and I attended the Michigan Association of Counties uh, conference in Lansing. Um, I'll be honest, I was a little skeptical to go because I'd never been to it, and they started off with a little bit of a bad taste in my mouth, because the first day they make it sound like you're going to something, and unless you're gonna drive down there, because I was driving home, it's only a walk-through meal thing, and I didn't want to go to that, because I wasn't driving down there to do that. But anyhow, once we actually got to the conference, it was very good. I'd encourage all of you to go. Um, hopefully, the fall with the farm season will work out. I'd like to go to the MAC Conference um, this fall as well, because I found it very, um, informative and information. There was a ton of information. I mean, some of the topics are more directed to, you know, what we are dealing with here in Gracia County, but, um, there was a lot of, really a lot of good information. I, I enjoyed that. Um, the ninth, we were also back down there. On the tenth, which was the Friday, it was, yeah, Friday, right? Yeah. Uh, Dave and I were here at the courthouse. Uh, we had a preliminary meeting with you and you about what we talked about yesterday. Um, on the fourteen, or yesterday, the fourteenth, I was at, uh, New Haven and, um, Newark Township, uh, for their board meetings. Uh, New Haven had a gentleman come in and speak about how bad the roads are getting torn up, um, by the manure haulers and how it had totally destroyed one of the roads, and they were out there, the road commissioner had to come out there during the day to try and get it so it was passable for even the trucks to keep going down it. Um, and pretty much the consensus was that, that change has to come from the state of Michigan. Um, I did take all of their concerns, and I gave them to uh, the road commissioner or to the road commission today to Mark. Mark called me. Um, and I told him I hear about the roads a lot, so once again, I just wanted to pass that on. And then this morning, uh, I was with the sheriff over at the nine-one-one center for the courthouse security plan. As you guys know, that started right shortly after COVID, I believe. We got started on a, a plan. It is the plan is out there. It's revised. It's been revised a few different times as things change, um. But now it's, um, coming to fruition. There's gonna be some things we, as a board, are gonna have to make some decisions on. Um, but I think there's some things that really need to be, um, seriously looked at. I don't know if Matt, have they talked to you yet, but they want to bring you and Tony in on this fold as well. Um, because there's some things that need to be we need to make sure that everything is working right, and then to actually do some sort of a reconfiguration in the front here, because what we have isn't conducive to what we are doing. Um, hasn't been since they installed the the, uh, metal detector and the counter there. Um, if you've ever had to walk through here at any busy time during the day, it's a very congested area, which is not conducive to security. So they have some thoughts, but they wanted to meet with, uh, Tony uh, for structural stuff to see what they can do. Um, technically, there should be some form of an office for our security staff. Um, probably the door that Marty's standing next to is the most logical location for that, since that room has, I don't know, Marty, what's in there right now? Three chairs on the table? If that, um, and all the years I've been with Gracia County, over five now, that's probably two more items than's in there normally. So, um, I think that may end up being a, a space that we can use to, uh, to accommodate some of the things that need to happen for our security, but that's all stuff that we'll reveal later. I just wanted you guys to know that there's gonna be some changes that need to be made right out front here in order to make this work like it should, so. That's all my stuff.
Tim?
Okay, I also went to, uh, Lansing for the, uh, conference, and there are a lot of things coming down, not only from the state, but also federal government that is going to be changing in the next few years. And so they're kind of bringing us up to date, or, and I can't even begin to go over it with you, because it was one after another after another that we sat through. Um, they really pushed a lot of through on, on that Tuesday, and then we went again on, um, uh, Wednesday morning, and I'm gonna tell you, even Wednesday morning, I was real surprised how many different groups were up there and talked about things that were gonna be coming down and and changes. So, um, I do have clippings on this, and as soon as I get a chance, um, this week has been bad, but because we've had a lot of meetings, but I'm going to, uh, get copies of all of this and try to put it together so, um, the commissioners can read through it, at least the topics and, and some of the things that were happening. Another thing happened this, today. I, I am, I'm on the board for MSU Extension, and, um, we were going to meet on Thursday in St. John's to do a tour. And so I called and said I would not be able to do that. We, we're gonna be here instead listening to some things on the battery, batteries that are gonna be coming into our county. And, um, so when I talked with, um, uh, Bill Henderson, uh, he gave me a name of another gentleman and told me I should call him because at Michigan State University, they have been doing a lot of work on some of the stuff that's going into Michigan. Um, and just kind of doing some research, trying to make things a little bit safer, and the big thing that they're working on is batteries, and that's the batteries that they're talking about, that they're gonna be putting on all, all around the county. Not only the county, but the whole state. And so, um, I went ahead and got his name. Um, I called the number, had a nice conversation with him. Um, I have invited him for Thursday, but there's gonna be one speaker that I believe that's gonna come and talk, and this other gentleman, because he's with Michigan State University, has got a lot of stuff planned already. Uh, one of the things that I have thought is that, um, since they, since they are researching a lot of, he's just said that they're researching the make of the battery, uh, with, you know, instead of putting the, and I can never think how you say it, how you.
Lithium.
Lithium. I can never say it right. Um, they're looking at doing something different, so it's a little safer. And so one of the things I thought, that maybe the commissioners can take a trip down and make a tour of Michigan State and see exactly what they're working on and, and what is their plans. And so we'll hear more about that in the future. And other than that, um, basically, I've been busy doing those two things. And been busy here. We're here just about every day.
I went to several meetings, and I don't really wanna report on any of them. So. That includes, uh, committee reports. New business. Farmer from Sumner Township. Bernie.
Also known as the three commissioner.
Picky, picky, picky.
Okay, um, and first on the agenda for me is, uh, request for full faith and credit for the um, vinegar intercounty drain. I guess, yeah, I called off the attorney's companies. I didn't think it was worth a thousand dollars. They have been.
Well, we, we've done this before, nothing new.
Yeah.
Bernie, you're looking for the three eighty-five in this one? Or just, then you got your second thing here that.
I got a second, totally different option.
Yeah, but you need the three eighty-five for this one, right? Is that what you need?
The three eighty-five.
Three eighty-five thousand.
No.
Full faith and credit.
It's the resolution.
Okay, but it says, if it's full faith and credit, that's the.
Bottom line is, yes.
And then, that, that, that's the limit.
Up to.
So do you need that in here? Do you need that number in here? You just need this.
I need.
Yeah.
Who voted?
Yeah.
He, he just.
Angie, you have the backing then?
Yes.
It's gonna be resolution twenty-five, three, three, two.
Okay. I approve. Resolution twenty-five, three, three, two.
Second it.
Moved by Steve. Secured by Jan. Approved uh, the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
It's gotta be a roll call on this.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
That's required by some banks. By us having that in our file, it gives us opportunity to possibly get cheaper interest rates, okay? It's more security for the bank. The next is, um, the discussion for a prepayment on the assessment for the same said drain. Right, this. Lately, you guys have been paying your assessment.
Right.
Reassessment.
Right.
Prior, it gives you a five percent savings, which once we go to the bank to borrow bank, that's the cost, really. So you save the interest in that.
Yep.
So, um, that's what I'm asking whether you guys wanna do it or not. We have, you know, it is timely, because, uh, the twenty-eighth, where we'll go and get, uh, for loans. So we want all the prepayments. Anybody in the district that's gonna pay, we want them by then, and then we go for a no. Okay?
Well, and it's, it's in the budget, so, but we do need a, a motion.
I so moved that we prepay for the work on the vinegar intercounty drain assessment totaling thirty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Whoops. Thirty-five thousand, one hundred and twelve. You're right.
Correct, yeah.
I had the other number, right? You didn't.
Moved by Steve, supported by.
I'll second.
By Jan.
A roll call.
Yep, it's money we need a roll call vote for.
Bernie. Commissioner Bunting.
I need your, yes, your business card. I wanna call you.
Commissioner Gay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
I wanna thank Bernie, because when I had questions about it, we spoke at length, so that I had a true understanding of what it was, and I also agreed that we didn't need to pay an attorney a lot of money to come stand here and answer no questions about something that's a formality.
Right, and then we're asking him to drive two hours here and back. It's out of respect. But if you guys ever have any questions on any of these things, I can get you the answers, okay? I promise I'll do that.
Yeah, you do.
He's available on the phone right now if we need to call him, okay? But I told him we.
Okay, we're done with you.
All right.
Can I leave?
We got a long meeting. Get out of here.
You guys are on. I just need to just start sending.
Bernie.
Next up, consideration to sign the MGT contract for friend of the court.
Good evening. And Jennifer, I'm the friend of the court administrator. I'm here asking, um, for a renewal of our MGT contract. They provide, um, services to help us manage our, uh, four D grant. This is just a continuation with a small increase of about four hundred dollars, but we get sixty-seven percent of that back, so. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Nothing changed from like last year when we did this, correct?
Just a small increase.
But other than that, the actual principle of what they do and your, and the service, everything.
Been with them for years since I'm here and before.
Yeah, okay, so this is just basically, we need to approve.
Right.
The year's contract, which is four hundred dollars.
Sorry. Well, it's, it's six thousand dollars total for the year, but the increase is about four hundred.
Yes. You need that total of how much it is included in this, or just to?
No, I just want you guys to approve the.
I so moved that we approved the master service agreement with MCT or GT?
GT.
GT.
G.
Yeah. MGT, if you. It's a little confusing of the, uh, at the top.
I know what they stand for right off. Oh, there we go.
Did you make it?
Their title, their title is MGT Impact Solutions. I apologize. I don't know what the MGT stands for.
We do a lot of our reporting. We, they, we do a lot of our reporting through them in, in other departments.
Different things. Same thing. So.
I'm gonna second it. What are you guys?
I didn't hear the first.
And he's just.
Yeah, I, I so moved that we approved the master service agreement with MGT.
You know, I got, I knew you were talking about all the others. Don't you know, so. So, support it.
Moved by Steve, supported by George to approve the contract with MGT. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or nay? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you know, ten dollars.
Okay, next up, Artland Material Management Plan.
Okay, so when we started talking about the material management plan, our understanding is that each county would get sixty thousand dollars, um, to create this plan. We decided to go with a multi-county, um, system which would have given us an additional ten thousand dollars plus a fifty cent per capita um, per person as of the last census. Well, at the end of last year, they, we kind of started hearing murmurs that there might not be funding available. Um, and so we kind of had to put a pause on the work that we were doing. At the beginning of the year, we found out that the money is available, but what they have changed it to is a reimbursable grant. So they are saying any money that we have spent on this program and on the planning for this, they will reimburse us back from, um, October first of twenty twenty-four. As a collective, um, Gracia included, we did not budget any money into this program because we were under the impression we were going to start just receiving these funds. So that is completely changed. So I have gone back and I am, um, tracking all of the hours that are spent total. Right now, I'm at about four thousand dollars that we're gonna be able to ask for reimbursement for, but we can't really do a lot with that. But as a whole, our, um, regional DPA has reached out to Eagle and said, you know, there are eight of us, eight counties, we don't have a budget, we cannot start writing this plan because we do not have funds. And Eagle has suggested that we send a letter to them requesting ten thousand dollars upfront from Eagle for each of the counties so that we can begin the process of getting a vendor so that we can begin writing this plan. Um, and so that is what I am asking for tonight, that, um, there is, uh, an attached letter, and that is to go to Eagle with that request for that ten thousand dollars. They may say no, um, but we are stuck in a situation that we can't do anything because we. we are stuck in a situation that we can't do anything because we don't have the funds to do anything. And so.
I have questions.
Yes.
Okay, the original plan was that we were going to get money from Lansing. And all of us, each county was going to get this money and we would be giving uh, Isabel County seventy thousand dollars each year. Is that right?
No.
I had a paper on it.
No. We paid for our portion of the payment of the of the plan, but no, we're not giving Isabella County that money.
I thought we were giving money to buy or to um, purchase a new machine that was gonna recite. We're not doing that.
Recycling, it's never been, they are completely separate. Isabella County is redoing their recycling center. This is material management plan.
This is different. This is different. Okay, I I that's what I was asking then. Okay. So I guess I'm I'm confused on this. So um, because the same counties are involved, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so what is this for?
Essentially, the situation that we're in right now, Gratcha County, we have to pay to have this planned up. But we were told before we were going to have money given to us to write this plan. And so now what we're doing is we're asking Lansing to give us just a little bit of a portion of that so that we can start the process.
And so what happens if you start it and then there's still no money there to continue on with?
The money is there. It's just as a reimbursable grant. They're just not giving us the money upfront.
Okay, and so how much do you need?
Here, we want to ask Eagle for ten thousand dollars.
We're not, we're not get, we're not giving any money. We're trying to get money.
Okay, so that we can start the process of writing the plan.
Who, what is?
Our. It's for the recycle grant.
Inside.
Yeah.
Because as as of this point, we have not even put out for our a vendor to begin the process of writing.
Very slow process, thanks to Eagle.
They stopped us in our tracks.
This should have been done a year ago. Still waiting.
So we need a motion to approve the request.
Remove.
Support.
Moved by George, supported by Steve, Steve, Tim, pardon me, to approve. Request for Eagle for a partial prepayment of ten thousand dollars with a vendor to writing the material management plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Osnay. Money.
He wants money.
Maybe sometimes somebody could come in and say they're gonna give us money.
Jesus, they may be gone.
Oh.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners. I'm Monty Malik, the Director of Veteran Affairs. Um, coming to you tonight to ask for an amendment to the budget that was approved for my office uh, last October. Unexpectedly, um, in February, the state realized they made some calculation errors. I provided that. This that was sent to me for your review. Um, we originally were slated for over seventy-one thousand dollars in a grant that helps pay for two-thirds of my salary and several key operations of the office. Um, that was dropped down over fourteen thousand dollars, not just us across the state. Um, future spending, they're saying we shouldn't expect um, that level of funding in the future. So I've provided information in my proposal of what this year they've told me we will are able to request up to fifty-seven thousand and thirty dollars. Um, as I said, that left a fourteen thousand dollar deficit that we'd already planned for and budgeted. I did a review, talked with some of the commissioners to get some guidance on um, what kind of services are they hearing are effective, not effective? And in turn, I gave you a new target where I'm asking for an additional um, eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars added to my county budget that previously wasn't planned to help us get through this year and continue the critical services such as the emergency support for veterans if they need it. The systems that run our office as far as the programs with the state and other agencies that without them, we can't do our job. And then to attend mandatory training that gives us our accreditation to even see the veterans and to work with the PA.
Well, we certainly uh, want to support our veterans. So here motion to uh.
Remove.
Second it.
Meet you there, the meeting.
Moved by George, supported by Jan.
Reach it to us.
Increase the veterans budget by eighty-eight hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Osnay. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Appreciate you. Yeah.
Take you on. Great work. I mean, I don't know how many of you have ever taken the time to stop in, but I mean, you're always busy and um, I, you know, you talk to the vets that are using the services and they're pleased you're really working hard for them. That's that's the cool part. So.
One more. How come you just bring it? Talking about cameras.
We appreciate it.
Very thankful.
We appreciate it. I saw it and seen it before, by the way.
Give me three still.
The greenery just fell off when you walked out.
Well, how's everybody doing today? Good? Good. Sheriff Clark, this is Deputy Tanis. Uh, we also have Chris Moore on Zoom and uh, took over GTAC uh, cameras in case you guys have any any questions, but we had budgeted uh, three hundred thousand for for new body cameras and in-car cameras. Our old ones that we have through Digital Ally are have run their course, probably what, ten years old or more? Fourteen, fourteen years old already. So unfortunately, they ran their course. Um, Axon seems to be the big player in the body cams and in-car cams, but unfortunately they come with a big price as well. And so we've got a great company here with GTAC. Um, we are able to outfit all of our deputies and all of our corrections officers, plus animal control and body cameras, outfit all of our um, cars as well and our interrogation room or interview room um, with uh, with cameras. Um, we're able to do this. Like I said, we had three hundred thousand of a budget. Quotes actually came under budget. Um, to get everything that we need through GTAC, that is a thirty-seven hundred dollar access point, two hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the cameras. And then twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty through couch communications to install. Yeah, uninstall and and reinstall our cameras in our cars comes out to roughly two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So we're about forty thousand dollars under budget. GTAC also has uh, uh, some fingers in in uh, Michigan as well. Calhoun County uses them, both Revillage Flint, uh, Flint Township, Rose Point, Bloomfield Hills, Toledo PD and Illinois, you know, to name a few of the big ones that use these cameras and uh, we did a presentation on them. They're phenomenal. They do everything that Axon does. Uh, our redaction equipment is very nice as well. Um, you know, so these all get us back in the twenty-first century.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Prosecutor, all on board with this camera?
Prosecutor should be because we could send that over to. Yep.
Have you spoken about this equipment and they're, and then they like it, they're available to them?
To be honest with you, we have not spoken with the prosecutor on it. We can redact everything that we need with this camera. And so they, we can send that file right over to them, just like we do right now.
They have access to it.
Correct. Yep.
And another thing with our interview room, right now it's being ran off from EPS security. So if somebody from a different agency of the prosecutor wants to see our interview room, we have to go back. There's no microphones. It's off that a camera just like that. So the audio is not spectacular. We have to burn that to a DVD. We now have to take that DVD over versus with this new interview room. We'll be able to send a link right to your phone, right to your phone, right to your computer. You can view it. You can share it. You can redact it and all that stuff. Um, so that that was a big thing with the interview room. When it comes to that.
What's great with this too, is after five, we we own this equipment. So after five years, the only thing that we'll have to re-up is just storage. You know, we we own these cameras. We don't have to sign that big contract again. The minute we purchase them, they're ours. We don't have to re-up it for another big five hundred thousand dollar.
Guarantees on it. What's the maintenance on it? What's?
Guarantees, I believe, is uh, three, is it three years on these?
And how much is the service call going to be?
I I haven't, I don't know what the service call.
Cole. That's something.
There we go.
Just.
Cole or Chris.
Either one of them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to speak to that. Were the questions, uh, how long were the devices covered? Is that the first one?
That's the first one.
Was warranty on the equipment?
Yes, sir. So all the equipment um, that uh, that uh, you all have quoted in front of you is covered for five years. Um, under GTAC buffer to buffer warranty. That falls under our advanced exchange program. So if anything fails uh, within the next five years of this contract, um, they will be able to replace it in a matter of twenty-four hours, uh, twenty-four to forty-eight hours for free. So that that is uh, no cost to you all.
But.
And then in addition to that.
Also, how about after five years and we have a breakdown? What, I I know it's the five years out and it could change, but uh, percentage wise, what 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 is it? What's the service calls are gonna be and how is that gonna work?
Sure. Yeah. So uh, as far as a a warranty coverage, obviously after that five years, um, the the products will no longer be under warranty. Now that said, our products have have proven to last much longer than five years in in many cases. So I don't foresee a lot of uh, obstacles or issues there. Now, as far as support goes, um, our support is free. Um, it is twenty-four seven. It is all stateside. Um, our our video business is based out of uh, Bloomington, Minnesota, which is right there in uh, Minneapolis. So you all can call us with any issues at any time. Uh, obviously Cole or sorry, myself and Chris are um, are going to be resources to you all uh, whenever you need help, but we also have twenty-four seven support uh, tier three certified technicians uh, that are always happy to help.
My next question is going to be about the the storages. I assume all going into the cloud.
Um, correct.
How are those uh, protected for um, hackers getting into it? Um, complete failure of the system? Do you have a backup system to that system? So we aren't in jeopardy of losing our our data.
Of course. Yeah, that's a great question. So um, our our cloud is actually ran through uh, Microsoft is your cloud government. So it's a government-backed program. It's fully CEGIS compliant. Um, so if you all need access to the uh, the uh, the CEGIS compliance uh, paperwork, I can send that over to you. Happy to do that. Uh, but it is incredibly secure. Uh, most federal agencies that are using body cams today, they operate on Azure Cloud Government and even the military in some cases. So um, very secure. We've never had a hack or anything of that sort before. Um, in addition to that, the um, uh, oh, sorry. What was the 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 follow-up question you had? Lost my train of thought.
The backup.
It was on the backup. There's something, yeah.
Yes, yeah. So we do something pretty unique in that regard. Um, we actually uh, have geo redundancy with all of our our cloud storage. So, you know, we have three uh, server farms located across the country. So in the event that one server farm goes down, which by the way, we've never had happen, uh, but if it did, um, it is actually backed up on two separate other uh, storage farms. So uh, you don't run the risk of losing that data.
And as far as the redaction goes, the the redaction is not only video redaction, but also the audio redaction, correct?
That is correct.
And it's simple to operate. I mean, because let's face it, FOIA's are a huge time waste for a police department.
Absolutely.
And we spend and and it's getting worse by the day. So this is gonna have software that simplifies the process for you know, like one of our detectives that may be doing it right now. This is gonna simplify their life.
Actually, our lieutenant likes the redaction
Okay.
software that we have. They did quote Veritone in there for sixteen thousand for the redaction. Our lieutenant likes our uh.
It's the one we're using.
Camtasia.
The new one that we got now or.
They'll work with these cameras. So.
Okay.
That's how we we were able to save about sixteen thousand on the quote.
I just want to make sure it's got good redaction stuff because that's a time kill.
It was one of the questions that I had for him and, you know, because he might not be doing it forever.
Yep.
But uh, he really likes our uh, the Camtasia reaction and uh, that's what he wants to go with.
Okay, that's totally fine. You guys should have what you guys want. I just want to make sure it all works together. So also, I I think it'd be important. Right? As our system is now, it's very old. I mean, fourteen, fifteen years old is, it's old. It's quite a process to download our in-car cameras. It, the way they are today still come in on a not even a, it's not a floppy disk, but it's the next thing after that. It's a little card.
Card.
An SD card that's not just an SD card like you're thinking out of your camera. It's a very expensive one because they aren't made anymore. Or if they are, they're very expensive. And then someone has to physically download all of that. Explain to us how much more effect, efficient these are.
So I've been here for two years now. Um, and Steve, when Steve was the undersheriff there, he can attest. I was a huge fan of Axon. Huge fan. And when GTAC came and presented, I was pleasantly surprised. The way that we're doing stuff over there is so far behind the times when it comes to technology. We're buying our dash cameras off from eBay. We are, uh, we are getting memory cards from Walmart, plugging them and going back. And it's, it's quite the hassle. Half our time, our dash cameras don't work. We'll have a flare request, request from the prosecutor's office, and we just have to say, we don't have that. These body cameras. They fit in here. Somebody grabs onto your shirt in a fight, rips it, breaks it. This camera is not worthless. And the GTAC cameras are fantastic. They mount just like the Axons. They don't come off the different mounts that they have. Um, and we can go through all that stuff. So far today, I've made four traffic stops lasting about ten minutes and I've been on a domestic violence call that was an hour. And a civil issue that was fifteen minutes, it's dead. So now going forward, the rest of my shift, I no longer can record any video, any victim interview, and that can all be brought into court versus their GTAC is uh, from our median, that we were told that eleven hours and thirty minutes where you can press record, whether it doesn't matter. And it'll give you that all that unlimited amount of time. It also has the quick connect. So like your phones where they sit on the charger, it's just like that in the car. If we have to hop out quick, it unplugs itself and we can get a full charge in minutes.
True.
Um, also with the the cameras, um, I can pass it around. All the cars are gonna have in-car um, video capabilities where I can watch my dash camera. I can watch my body camera from inside my car. What does that mean? Which means more officers on the road and not sitting in the office going through videos. We can watch all the videos on the the dash cameras. They're about a five-inch monitor and we'll be able to watch all those videos. So it's keeping our officers on the street, not having to come back. But.
Download. When the cars pull up, do they automatically download?
Correct.
So no more of this.
Yeah.
And stuff between.
Well, it's gonna take a huge burden off our detectives of having to download. If I make fifteen traffic stops, that has to plug and download for however long it takes for fifteen traffic stops versus we pull in the parking lot, gonna have antennas parked at the entrance. So as soon as you enter the parking lot, it begins its download of the dash cameras. What does that mean? You pull in, you go in, you get a cup of coffee, you say hi to the sheriff, tell him what's going on. You walk back out, get in your car and you can have every video that you you've watched. So it's in. In a couple of months, when we kind of get into the newer technology and we present more stuff to you guys of stuff that we're doing, because we're super excited. We're actually gonna invite all of you guys out to our patrol cars. In there, you'll be able to see all this technology that we're adding. So that way you guys see where not only your money's going, but the the county's money is going towards.
The cameras have four K resolution as well. And so as you guys know, you know, on your TV screens, what that four K looks like, it's amazing at how crystal clear it is.
That'll help see license plate.
Absolutely.
Night, night with your, um, obviously I know that the in-car ones, I'm sure adjust for daylight in uh, in dark or darkness, but is it infrared? How does it?
So they have different. So they have different setups uh, where we could have uh, I won't say night vision, but that that style stuff. Um, and so that has that capability. A big thing too, that we really think is a huge safety thing, is it also has the ability. Um, and so that has that capability. A big thing too, that we really think is a huge safety thing, is it also has the ability for live streaming. So our dispatch could have access to that. So if we're on a call, we're not answering our status checks, we're not answering the radio, they can actually livestream in and see what's going in. Um, and it, it gives us an extra barrier for, of protection.
Yep.
Um, another great thing about these products is they are super durable, extremely durable. You can YouTube and Google. There's actually a video where a Ford uh DNR officer was wearing it. He jumps in to the ocean to save somebody. And his body camera comes off. It floats to the bottom and it records for about eight hours. You see sharks and fish swimming by. The nice thing about this is the dash cameras and the body cameras all have GPS. So we'll be able to be GPS tracked. Um, we'll be able to, to um indicate different points. So if we're in a vehicle pursuit and somebody throws something out the window or we're on a canine track for a missing juvenile and we have a change in behavior by our dog, we can indicate that and go back to that last location if we were to lose the track or something like that. So there's so much endless possibilities with these body cameras. And they do the exact same thing that Axon does with the exception of they're $300,000 cheaper. And you don't have to pay $500,000 every five years. These things do the exact same thing. They work just as good. Um, but it's easier for you to justify to your communities why we're not paying that extra $500,000 when we could get the same, but more close to home service from Chris and Cole and more attention from them versus a gigantic, huge company.
Cole, you're local as well. I know where Chris is from. Um, Cole, you're also local. Are you in-state?
So no, I'm actually, um, I'm based in Kentucky. Uh, Chris is just down the road in, in uh Grand Rapids, but uh yeah, I'm in Michigan probably, oh, I don't know, at least twice a month. It feels like I need to get an apartment up there, but uh uh, but no, I, I cover a little bit of a larger territory being a, a regional sales manager. Uh, but that's why it's, it's great for me to have resources like Chris that are kind of my uh, my local boots on the ground.
Well, how long after the purchase order is placed do we get receipt?
So usually when we get a PO, um, we process that PO immediately. Um, our, our lead times for product to show up at your doorstep is, is typically around six to eight weeks. Uh, which that's actually an industry uh, uh best.
They'll have them by summertime.
Yes, sir.
Out of curiosity, you have a body camera on right now?
Rare.
Where, where's it usually at?
So we typically with these, um, cause we switch the out exterior vest, um, they just fit right in the pocket like this. Like I said, you have the string. So if somebody grabs onto you, it's gonna break.
Okay.
We've had many times where they break.
The other camera.
And with Digital Ally, they're going out of business. And so they're no longer making these cameras. So we're back to the dash camera thing. We're gonna end up buying these off from eBay. And keep kicking the can down the line where, at what point are there gonna be no more? And we already have to share these because there's been some that have broken and everybody has to have an ID, uh, a serial number to their name for the prosecutor and the courts and all that stuff. So it's a hassle that they'd have to go back and reserialized somebody's name um in regards to those, which these, like I said, they mount just like if guys, Elma, St. Louis, they mount just like those. They're just a different brand. Um, but you're, in my opinion, you're gonna get more bang for your buck because you're gonna have better customer service with Chris and Cole. You're gonna have people that are honest with you and.
Now, when you're sitting in a car or you're not real busy, do you turn them off or you leave them on all?
Our, our policy, basically anytime we have uh contacts with uh citizens or traffic stops or anything like that. The nice thing about these is they're always recording. So if I'm sitting in my car and all of a sudden something crazy happens, we're able to go back and withdraw that video with these. We're not able to. So our cameras are always recording. However, you, you, you start yours, it goes back 30 seconds or we can set it, but let's say something crazy happens. We're walking into a store or something. All of a sudden we see something going on, we can actually go back and withdraw that video, which is a huge safety bonus for not only us, but for the community. Cause when stuff gets crazy, sometimes the last thing you think about is turning your camera on.
Hey man, you all set?
Yeah.
Alright, I saw move that we approved the contract. What's that?
Well, neither of the men say they're good, they're good.
Yep.
My man.
Yep. Um, Grashaw County Sheriff's Office entered into agreement with his, the actual name of the company. Is that?
Yeah, right, GTAC.
Right, GTAC for $259,289 for the new in-car video interview room and body cam and cloud storage and service.
Is it, it's, it should be 259,339?
339. That's, that's what I, that's what I have right there if my math.
339.
339.
They're not gonna change that. So you don't need enough to in there, do you? You might have to come back for a penny.
259, two, or 230, 39. So, yeah.
This is like to go up to nothing. I don't have to deal with any.
We can, we can go up to 200 and whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I hear a second?
Yeah, I think Tim did.
Tim did.
Okay. Moved by Steve, supported by Tim.
And that's Buddy did, right?
Yes, we have.
That's ours. Yeah, so always telling the budget. So you say, buddy.
That made a pop, like.
Already have budgeted. We already said yes once.
And I'm passing around too, um, the, what the cameras look like. It also has a list of the in-car capabilities and all that stuff right there on that. So if you wanna take a look at what those look like. Um, oh, but like I said, you can kinda look in the pamphlet and it's uh, like I said, it's a lot of cool stuff.
We got a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jose.
Thank you.
Do you want to support our chairman?
Yeah, and then uh I also put some on you, on your guys' plate as well. Um, means we're saving ton of cash with these uh
Oh, yeah.
These body cams. Man, this kinda just came to our attention a little bit. Um, unmanned drones. Uh, we have, we have had to so far this year, I've only been there for three months. We've had to rely on Elma and um Clinton County with their drones. Um, Deputy Tanis had to use one just the other day in state land for suicide. Um, that was out there. He had checked a car with it. We have used it so far on domestic violences in Grashaw County. We had one for a uh, a child that had ran away. Um, with these, with these unmanned drones, they're, they're, in my opinion, they're, they're better than a dog because we can train six to seven deputies on these and then they can pull it whenever they need to and go. We can use them for the suicidal subjects. We can use them for domestic violences. We can use them to do our um traffic accidents. You can get up above. They can take the pictures and do it. Um, infrared is well on them. You know, they, they are um, a very, very, very good tool. And like I said, so far this year, we've already had them out about six different times. The problem is we're relying on the other departments, you know, to bring them in. Um.
If you guys, are you gonna plan on like joining in a joint? You know, we're gonna be there for them if, you know.
Absolutely, we would.
People show up and one of your pilots won't be working when we need it.
Joy.
We have that late agreement right now and so it would, you would just continue on.
That's how I'm sure that we're.
Specific one? You got some dollar amount value?
We do. We got a specific one right here and uh.
Handout, you just give off.
Yeah.
And, and so with, with this, we, we looked at two different drones. Um, I only sent for the one because it's 12,000. There is another one for 19,000. However, I personally don't think that is worth the extra 7,000. You guys talk about how you wanna save money. You want somebody to give you money. This is me telling you to save money. The $19,000 one is, in my opinion, not worth it because it doesn't allow for you to fly in the rain and the snow, which isn't applicable for this county. Um, with, with these drones, eh especially come the summer, we run into the issue where we have a lot of missing kids. We had a missing kid with autism up in Riverdale yesterday. Getting these out um in the air is in the utmost importance, especially come summer when we get the corn up high. It's gonna uh save us so much time versus waiting for a canine to come from bath. Or if Elma doesn't have a drone operator or Clint County, we have to be able to get these up in the air as quick as possible. Um, uh, so like I said, I, i- if I thought the $19,000 one was the one that we needed to have, I would tell you, but like I said, I've been around drones for quite a, quite a while now and I just, I don't see it being worthwhile for the taxpayers to have that 19,000. Cause in my opinion, we're getting, you'd get better camera resolution. However, you're gonna lose, lose it with, when you can't fly in the rain and snow. Um, so like I said, it allows us to train people um and get, get them available 24 hours a day for the communities.
How much for that? Well, I'm looking at the video of it right now. Um, I see you're asking for three batteries. What's the, do you know what the charge time is to recharge?
Time. Yeah, playtime's about 45 minutes.
Charge a new, like you go up and cook a battery, 40 minutes.
15, 15 minutes.
It's all free charge.
You're gonna have extras.
Yeah, cause that's what the patrol cars now have.
Yeah, so like I said, eh, you'll always have those extra batteries. Um, some departments opt to do four or five, but in my opinion that there's no amount of round that could be covered with three batteries. I, I just, I don't foresee that being.
How much are the batteries?
They're uh $579.
$29 minus 100. Not bad. So I would recommend you just try three and if you need four, get one. I mean, that's that big.
And, and that, and that's the thing is I, I, we come here and this department comes here not to waste money. If we didn't think we needed it, we, we wouldn't.
Well, of course, I appreciate that too.
Um, and, and like I said, I'm not, we're not here asking for, for three drones, four drones because it's not applicable. We have four people on a ship. Four people don't need a drone.
Right.
So like I said, the, with Elma, St. Louis.
That's all we want.
And we would, and it would allow us to work in conjunction with Elma and St. Louis more. Um.
Yeah, if they had a big deal, there's three flying drones right there.
And, and that's the, and that's the thing with, with having the person there. If somebody were to escape, we could have Elma, St. Louis and you could cover so many more miles.
What do you say, Steve?
I'm just reading through all this. That's a sweet drone. I mean, it's, are you looking at the fourth series then? Series four, fourth is series four.
Oh, yep.
Okay.
Like I said.
One that's playing the video on my.
Yeah, like, like I said, they have the, the big and fancy one, but in talking with, with this company, they, they told me, yeah, it's got this and that, but it, it.
You're equipping it nice. I mean, I see you guys are putting those spotlights up in your.
Like speaker.
Speaker, all the.
Well, with this, and the, the thing about the spotlight and speaker that is pretty cool is it allows us um to give commands to people from a distance. So um like Sheriff was saying, a couple of weeks ago, we had a subject that committed suicide in his car in the state game area. We're the lower that drone in front of the car, give those commands, look inside that vehicle without having to put somebody at risk of walking up to an, an unknown situation. Same thing if we had somebody barricaded a house. Elma's looking in to buy a drone that can fly inside a house. This would just, there's this, so many different opportunities. And with them buying that stuff and us buying our stuff as a, as a community as a whole, it's gonna, in my opinion, make everything so much safer.
Um, so part of this 12,000 is the, I see the drone license. You're gonna need to
Correct.
2900 is gonna be, some of them here are gonna have to work into your budget for the future.
Yep.
Training.
Yep.
As far as um do we have a local that can train, you know, so that they can be?
So this company will actually come out um and, and train and, and work with us. Like I said, Elma uses some, Aven County, um Lansing PD, Grand Rapids, Kent, all these departments. The guy that actually founded this company is a Kent County dep- or a former Kent County deputy. And it's taken off nationwide and actually in some parts of Canada. But like I said, it's one of those things that we're always gonna have somebody there. They have 24/7, 365 support. So if we're having issues, we call. It's the same thing with GTAC. We call them, say, hey, this is what we're doing. They can remote log into our drone and fix all of our issues.
Oh, that's great.
It's, it's way above my knowledge of technology and like, but we've heard nothing but good things about it.
Your module you're gonna use to control it. How big is your screen?
So it's about the same thing as the GTAC. It's about a five inch screen.
Okay.
Uh, it comes with uh.
Sun shield and everything so you can actually see it?
Yeah, it, it has all the bells and whistles, a, a normal drone that Elma, St., or not St. Louis, Elma and Clinton County have. Um, it uh, like I said, has the infrared cameras for night, uh heat, all that stuff. It, like I said, it would also be a great use for our fire departments. They have big field fires this time of year. They have big house fires. We'd be able to fly that drone, show them where those hotspots are. It's not just something that the sheriff's department's gonna use for finding bad guys or finding kids. It's gonna be able to be dispersed throughout the community in a multitude of different ways.
Accent, full accent avoidance, all that stuff or pledge avoidance.
Yep. So it has all that stuff. It has a, a home base is what it's called. So it's a little map. We have Bluetooth and locks in those GPS coordinates. So if at any point the controller dies or anything like that, it'll return itself automatically to home.
Yep.
So.
Or the batteries start going dead, it'll, it knows enough.
Hits the return home.
Yeah, so it's, we're not gonna have any drones that just take off and never come back.
Yeah.
Replace, does it come with replacement blades and stuff?
We can get replacement blades, uh, very reasonable. I think they were uh.
Yeah. And like I said, it's something that we can work with the company. The company's been not saying anything that would.
Yeah, blades were, blades were $19.
So.
Yeah.
I just read, I have one, the DJI, just get some. You're gonna hit an insect.
Yeah.
It's gonna monkey something up, but it's not.
Like I said, UVT is, like I said, they're fantastic. If you call them and say, hey, this is what I got. It's already shipped before you're off the phone with them.
Okay.
Is it total among that? 12,000 what?
For 6217.
12,000, 6217.
217.
Any more discussion on it? Anybody? I mean, if, if you've never been around one, you're amazed.
You want some of that, that you haven't spent. This is what you'd like to spend. It doesn't even reach that much.
No, the, the 16,000 that we saved on the redaction doesn't.
Gonna have to do a.
You know, our drone doesn't even come to that. So.
Well, we'll have to have a roll call on this because we do have to do a budget adjustment because it's, they're not the same.
No.
I saw move that we approved the purchase of unmanned just a drone, a drone for the uh sheriff's office, the DJI Matrice 4T in the package that they've presented for a total of $12,462.17.
I can, moved by Steve, supported by Tim. Uh, who gave the drone for the sheriff's department, uh, roll call.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Saps.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Bravo.
Thanks, sir.
Hey.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, yeah, thank you. Good luck.
You guys.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Hey, you're out there. When, when he presents the cars, can we not be so nervous? Your ears got red too.
He did. It right, just right there. Not before, just right there.
Well, I said that. You can take down a bad guy and not have a problem, right? Stands up in front of us and goes, no.
You will be one.
Okay, next up's a resolution for the indigent defense fund. There's a one deficit in the indigent defense fund.
Yeah, can I? She's not here?
Says no.
Okay, I'll, I can handle that. What it is. Um, over time, what's happened is uh, we didn't budget enough and the state didn't give enough. So that's, but what it is, is we have to, we, we, we have to pay in, we have to have a budget adjustment. And we have to uh pay in 124,519 into the indigent defense fund. Now, don't panic. We'll get it back. It's funded by the state. But when we wrote up the budget, we put, obviously that much less in it. We have to make up the budget, okay? The state will reimburse us for that. But there's been an unprecedented number of cases that have gone through this year that nobody expected to come through. After COVID, everybody broke loose in there and went to hell. So we have drug cases, the sheriff's gone, but I can tell you right now, it's jail's fault.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why. And most of them are pulling down this fund. So basically what it is, it's simply a we have, we have to keep that fund full. We have to pay bills out of that fund, but that, that fund will be reimbursed back to the state. We'll get the money back.
What's the numbers again? 124,000?
124,519.
It's the deficit.
No. Okay.
As, I'm asking for a. As, I'm asking for a budget adjustment in that amount.
I need the resolution, right?
Yeah.
You're making the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second up.
Moved by George, supported by Jan, to put a hundred, well.
Resolution.
Was adopt resolution twenty-five dash three-three-one. And this will be a line item in the next budget year. All those in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay. Commissioner Owen.
Yes.
Can't wait to see that fly. Be fun. Any more unfinished business? You all done with that?
Yep.
So, okay, I'll make a motion then, that we would suspend the regular meeting and go into the airport meeting. Support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim, to leave the regular meeting and go into the airport meeting. All those in favor, say aye. In the airport meeting.
Okay, gotta go over here. Your stuff up. Okay. There we go, right there, okay. Okay, um. Do you want me to answer the question? You want, you're the chairman, so you tell me what you want me to do.
Uh, we've got the all of the dates. We don't need to do that, I don't think.
Well, the airport manager's in Hilton Head this week, so.
Okay.
He won't be here. So the report is as given. And you'll see the fuel history, you look at that, and uh, we were way down on fuel sales this year, but we had such bad weather. We've had several weeks of no flying. And so Dennis and I talked about it, and, and what he says is that when you have those weeks of no flying, it's called pent-up demand. Once it gets nicer, it'll come, pick right back up. So it's, it's just a matter of, we just have not had good weather for, for flying, so. And they got, she got the uh, the finances. Yeah, the finances, um, and Mary Ann and I have talked about the red marks, uh, they're not really red. They're indications of what was and what is, so uh, she's gonna do something different the next time, so, because every time I see a red mark, I think, well, we're in a deficit. That's not the case. If you wanna know how much money we, we have, uh, in the check, checking account, go up to cash balance, all the way to the left, towards the top, you'll see one million, one hundred and seventy. I can't load up, see it. Thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. That's what we have, okay? So it's not, we're not in a red, it's, it's uh, the way that came across B and S, B S and A comes across. So she'll fix that, because I don't like red. Red bothers me. So we're okay. And if there's any specific questions, I can write it down and ask Mary Ann, but uh, that I can't answer. Uh, okay. Now, uh, the big portion of the meeting is going to be uh, contracts that some of them haven't been updated till, since two thousand and thirteen. So, uh, we're going to, I, I suggest that we go through them and uh, we correct those. You should have them all in front of you. And we can start, what's the, see, airport, let's see, what's the?
Personally, that's snow removal.
Snow removal, okay. The snow removal contract. And the old contract is right here. And the old contract was twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-four cents. That was eight years ago. And he's been operating on that same price for eight years. You can remember, the airport, guy that manages the airport has all the equipment. He bought it himself, three-point aviation, but they bought, they've got, you've been out there. And you've been out, you've seen it. There's a lot of dollars' worth of equipment that he purchases, all right? And so, uh, we, Dennis and I got together to try to come up with a fair price. And uh, we're, we're proposing, or I'm proposing a thirty-five thousand dollars uh, 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 season, if you will, from November through March, or whenever it snows. That'll be a, a total of seven thou- oh, there it is, seven thousand dollars a month. All right, for those.
How much is that over? You said we had one for the last five years. How much was the, the old one again?
Oh, the old, the old contract? Twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. And that was back in two thousand seventeen, sixteen seventeen. So he's not, that's all he's been making since then. Okay? Anything else? So, that being said, I would like to make a motion that we would approve the thirty-five thousand dollars for snow removal going forward.
Moved by George, supported by Jan, to pay thirty-five thousand dollars in five equal installments for the snow removal with three-point aviation. Roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Okay. The next thing we have is the mowing contract, and I think that was put on your desk in front of you, okay? The mowing contract is pretty well up to date, uh, with the numbers. But we're gonna do some things that are different. So hold, so let me go through that with you. DAA chapter, that's their fundraiser. That's how they make money, is by mowing the, mowing the airport, okay? So, their fundraiser really only makes a few thousand dollars a year. Why is that? Because they, they pay to have that Dennis and Connor, the people that are out at the airport, they actually mow, mow it too, all right? And so, uh, what we propose to do is to be able to take some of that money out of the contract by the county airport purchasing a mower, right? And that's gonna, and we're not gonna, we haven't got that in the budget yet. We're gonna be talking about capital improvements next month, all right? And that'll be in the capital improvement plan. Uh, but what it is, is they've, they've got some older mowers, and they, they're not doing a good job, and so I suggested to Dennis that they have, they would have to buy a mower for fourteen thousand dollars. And when you're only getting ten thousand dollars a year, that don't make any sense, does it?
No.
All right, so what we propose to do is that the county airport will enter into a contract with a dealer, if you will, and the one that we found that's got the best deal, uh, and right now it seems to be Hudson, at fourteen thousand dollars rough round figures, and what is nice about it is, through government buying, uh, every two years, we can trade that back in for like nineteen hundred, two thousand dollars. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Twenty-five hundred dollars. So, you took a fourteen thousand dollar one, run it for two years, pay twenty-five hundred dollars, and got another fourteen thousand dollar one. All right, and then our plan is to buy one, and then next year buy another one. So we've always got two brand-new mowers, basically, running all the time. And that would just make sense, you don't have any downtime, it runs, uh, parks do it all the time. That's how they make things work, is they just, they get them, they run them, and they turn them out and get new ones. And then you save so much money by maintenance and all that stuff.
All, all covered.
All covered. But we're gonna talk about that at a later meeting, when we talk about the capital improvements that we're gonna put in the budget, but that won't be tonight. What I'm proposing is, though, we go with uh, we got a figure here of per season of ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Okay? And so that would make the motion that we would approve that.
So currently, they're only making two thousand dollars a year in a mower? Is that what you said earlier, because it's their fundraiser?
No, no, they make about three or four thousand dollars for themselves. The other, the other is going to, to pay, they get, the Connor and Dennis get twenty dollars an hour in a mower. And so we just, basically, because we're gonna get the mower, we left everything the same, so. I need not be getting any more, just twenty dollars an hour.
Okay, so we're gonna buy the equipment, and basically, we're gonna pay them ten thousand dollars a year to, to drive the lawnmower, right?
Might, no, no, because if we pull this off, they're gonna put half, half of the value of the trade-in. They're gonna knock that off the contract. You know what I'm saying? Like thirteen, what, it says thirteen hundred dollars a year, all right? That would be reduced. It's right in the contract, uh, middle, middle, middle of the contract, you'll see ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And right next to it is thirteen hundred dollars. All right? Reduced. Right on the front page. You got it. No, 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 that's not the one. It should have been laid on your desk. It wasn't what, the papers you ran off. It was a separate paper.
It wasn't in our packet?
It was laid on the desk, because the packet was not right.
No, I switched it out.
Oh, did you? You wouldn't have it.
You separate, though. You wanna pass that down to him, because that's the contract. But if we do the mower, it's on both, it would be nine thousand. Not the ten, so your motion, you want.
Thousand dollars, seven, ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five. When we do the mower, it would be reduced by thirteen hundred dollars per year.
So you want the nine thousand?
Yeah.
That's a motion, not the ten.
Yes and no, because we haven't bought the mower yet. You know what I'm saying? I don't wanna have to go back and something, I never know what's gonna happen tomorrow.
Okay.
But if we do it now, this is ten thousand, they got it locked in. Now, if we get the mower, that's a completely different, then we, by, by writing it in there, everybody you should know what we gotta do.
Gotcha. So we're gonna approve this contract, this agreement for the ten thousand.
Right, ten thousand, but to be reduced by thirteen hundred dollars if we purchase a mower.
How much do they mow with the lawnmowers? Because didn't we just?
Acres.
Thirty, thirty-one acres. Then I'm mowing with a sixty-inch mower deck. We just bought a tractor a while ago to mow.
Yeah, but we got.
Low most of the thirty-one acres. That's, because part of it's farmed, part of it, they mow with that big, they just wanted that new John Deere. That's, I just was wondering how much.
Doesn't mow.
What's that? He doesn't pull a mower with that tractor?
No, no mower on that.
That just moves the.
Move stuff around, so there's no.
Just a, like a tug, then.
Right.
I thought they were gonna mow with it.
No, no.
Though, your last page shows you where they mow.
There's no mower there. No, no, no.
They mow thirty-one acres on two lawnmowers. They'd never shut them off. They'd sit on them all day long, every day.
Oh, there's a lot of acres to mow, I know. Takes them a couple of days a week, mow. I mean, on and off, I mean. Everybody understand what I'm saying now?
Okay, I found it in the, please.
Because you made the motion to sign the mowing agreement at ten thousand, seven seventy-five.
Oh, that was, and, and we can also put in there to be reduced by thirteen hundred dollars a year if airport authority buys a mower. Okay. All right, everybody under screen?
Yes, I do.
In here, second.
I'll second up.
Moved by George, supported by Jan, to enter into a contract for ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, which will be reduced by thirteen hundred dollars a year if we buy a mower. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Osnay, motion carried.
Okay. Now, the airport manager's agreement. Okay, the airport manager's agreement has been the same manager's agreement since two thousand and thirteen. Basically, when he started. So, um, I think it's on. Uh, yeah, um, and in two thousand and thirteen, uh, three-point aviation, and the manager, Dennis, was making eight, seven, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars in two thousand and thirteen. Now what, now what's the airport manager do? He manages the airport, but he does the things in the terminal. He actually gets planes in and out. They have all sorts of duties around there to take care of, and.
Buy some gas.
I get the maintenance and all that other stuff. Uh, so, um, we decided, well, we, we thought a good figure to go to is, and it should be in the report there. Thirty-five thousand, I think it is.
Yeah, thirty-two four.
Thirty-two, is that what it is, thirty-two four? I haven't looked it up yet, I haven't looked at it in a minute. So, it'll be uh, uh, thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Okay, payable uh, monthly by twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. Okay? I'm also asking, and this is a special ask, because I just felt, I feel guilty when I, when people aren't getting paid the proper wage. I feel that we should retroactive that payment back to uh, fiscal year.
Beginning of the year.
The fiscal year, October. Because he'd been working on a contract for ten, like fourteen years, fifteen years, whatever it is, so, I mean, the guy's honest to God, the guy's done a great job and not, not really complained a lot. I just think it's fair to pay somebody a fair wage.
You know, and there was times that they worked for free.
Yeah, so, I just. So.
You wanna go back to October one?
Yeah.
It's twenty-fourth of this month.
Yeah.
And you've been receiving anything?
Yeah, that, that'll come out of, we've already paid him.
So it'll be a. Just be above and beyond what he's already.
Exactly. It's not, it'll, till we catch him up. I just, I just.
But before, in previous years.
Frankly, this should have been done when we took over the airport, but.
They're just doing it for this fiscal year. We're not going back fifteen years.
No, 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 no. All right? So, I'll make another motion that we would approve a new airport manager's agreement. And pay the new airport manager, what was it, thirty?
Two thousand, four hundred.
There you go, thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars a year.
And you wanna retro?
And retroactive back to.
And the difference back to October one.
I mean, you got.
Twenty twenty-four.
Second up.
Moved by George, supported by Jan, to enter into a contract with the airport manager for thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars a year payable in monthly installments of twenty-seven hundred dollars, and also go back to the beginning of the fiscal year to pay him at this rate. Do we, should have a roll call on that?
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have two farm leases, um. We have one farmer that does grow soybeans on the east end of the field, and we have one farmer that does the cutting of the hay, and basically the rest of it, all right? And we'll take the stone fence organi- organics farm lease first. Right? And basically, we try to make it as simple as we can. This is a five-year contract we're entering into, and what's nice about this, the person doing it will pay us six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Yeah, we got paid finally. Six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. And he said, well, that's cheap. Well, it's just hay, and it's not, it's just grass that's grown, and he's cutting it, and he's bailing it. So he's spending, he's getting money for it. I think he gets about forty-five, fifty dollars a bail, but at the same time, he's gonna pay us to do it. So, I, it's a, for, as far as I'm concerned, that's a win-win for the airport.
So there's one contract for a hundred and twenty-five acres, right?
Yeah, I think it's the one you're on, right? This is uh, for the owner, uh, stone fence, organic, organics. Eh, I think it's the one you're on, right, is it's, uh, for the owner, uh, stone fence, organ, organics? Uh, be at the top.
Yep, stone fence.
Okay.
Mike Jeff.
Yeah. No. Stone fence is, uh.
Name.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the other farmer paying that?
No, it's gonna be different. Cause you're gonna pay a little less.
One, we only have one lease in this packet, right?
There should be two.
There's the one for a hundred and twenty-five tillable acres at forty-nine dollars an acre.
That's the stone fence one.
That's the stone fence one, and then there's a different one.
Yeah.
That got missed, I emailed to you.
That's how many?
For Britain.
It's eighty-six acres of total that.
Thirty-five, that's thirty-five an acre.
That's good, I might have got them mixed up.
No, you're, you're right.
Am I right?
You have the forty-nine for a hundred and twenty-five acres for five years to stone fence.
Yeah, but one's hay and one's soybeans, but I can't. I had them all figured out one time.
Do we ever put these out for bid, like we did the other farm, or no?
These are what we had, we're gonna go with now, we're, they're a five-year out. In other words, it's a five-year agreement, and we'll bid out, we'll get, had to bid it out in five years.
Okay, cause I just, I know the last one, we just.
No, these, these don't, they, they're, we look, there's no agreements, I mean, this guy.
I, I'm not saying that there isn't, I'm just wondering.
Five years.
Should we accept?
Yeah, they're five years.
Do we accept bids?
Five years.
These, the only two that bid on them then?
Uh? They just, they didn't do anything on it. That's the problem, we have to start from. So. Uh. And that's for, let me see. Who's gonna bid on sand ground like that anyway? I don't do it, so anyway, that's, it's forty-nine acres, six thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars per year. So I make a motion that we would.
We, we've been paying, or they've been.
They pay us. Yes.
For how many years?
I don't. That, it's just, they have never kept.
No record.
We're turning, we're, we're starting to keep track of that.
Last year would have. Do we even do this without accepting bids?
This year we're going to, yes. Let's have a starting point.
This is a five-year deal.
Yeah, we have to have a starting point somewhere.
Would you do a five-year deal if we haven't accepted bids, or one-year deal, and then next year we do a?
You understand, I understand, this is where, that's what I propose when we start at.
Is it for one year or for five?
Five years, starting this year. You're not gonna get it any better than that, I'm gonna tell you that right now.
That was the sentiment for our bid out here on Washington Road.
No, but.
Um, or on State Road, so.
Well.
How many acres is that?
You're not understanding the circumstances. Uh, so anyway, I propose that we go ahead and, I, I propose we go ahead and do this.
For a hundred and twenty-five, the other one's for eighty-one.
Okay, a hundred and twenty-five and. Eighty.
I propose.
They pay us one, one chunk?
Yeah, once a year, and no, no.
Hundred and fourteen acres?
Yeah.
That's a lot of acres.
Who, the.
I might buy.
Any guy.
Garden in there.
Yeah, I think that's the one I got, yeah.
And the soybean guy, he's home.
He lives a little bit less, has a little bit less land, I think.
I think it's.
Soybeans, I think.
A hundred and twenty-five acres is the Stonehedge, that's the soybeans. And the.
Oh, I don't remember.
Eighty-six.
Grafton Farms.
Grafton is your hay, correct?
Uh, let me, yes.
I guess I'd feel a lot better.
I got them back. Here, I got them back.
Come back out for bids, like we did last.
Why don't you make that?
Not. Couldn't have been good at that.
Cause this, we're locking ourselves in for five years on that.
Mm-hmm. Cause remember you're at an airport.
So, I, well. Well, except, I just wanna make sure that we're doing what's right for the county, though. Um.
It is for the airport.
Do you want more money?
No, I just. He doesn't know how much money he wants. Apparently. He wants to lock it in, he, he wants a bid contract.
Well, that's how you, yeah, that's how we do things, we, we know, it's out the bid, I know, it's just happened, bid. That's where I'm saying, if we're gonna do it, why don't you for a year, Brad? That's my point, is we didn't, so. I have fully, it's time to farm, so I'm fully okay with. A year to get us, because that's who's been farming it. But then I think it should be just like the other one, it was put in the newspaper, and all that kinda stuff. Very likely gonna be the same people who farm it. But. That's just, I think it needs to be. Put out for bid.
So you wanna go a year? I, I think. What's your proposal is?
That would be, I think is the right thing to do, is to have a one-year, and then we put it out for bid, so. You know, we, it's time to farm, so there's, it ain't time to be putting it out for in newspaper now, so. I mean.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm okay with, these are the two farms that have been farming, correct? I, they just didn't have an agreement, correct?
No. So, helping out the airport.
Yeah, so I'm.
But we didn't know the airport either, we didn't call the airport until this last year.
No.
That is, that's the reason why.
And that's totally fine, I just think that, to be fair to everyone else, we should get it out the bid. Next for the farm year of twenty twenty-six. Just do a five-year next year.
Yeah.
So.
It's simple.
I'm good with that.
Right.
If you want. Well, you had a motion about this, and just, you just want.
Yeah, but it was a five-year, yes.
You wanna amend it, or?
I could amend it.
You had the motion, so amend it, and we're good to go, and we'll do it next year.
Alright. So, the stone fence one, or, you got it written down there, haven't checked.
Yeah.
A hundred and twenty-five acres at forty-nine dollars an acre.
But changing, updating the motion to change the contract to one year.
Okay. So I'm over it. Support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim. Who entered into a land lease agreement with Stone Farm.
Stone Hedge.
Stone Fence Organic.
It's organic, yeah.
For one-year period. For a total of sixty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay, motion carried.
Okay, and then, of course, the next one is, uh.
The eighty-six acres.
For the eighty-six acres, uh, that's the hay. For three thousand ten dollars.
Grafton Farms.
Yeah. Grafton Farms. And that would be if we're a one-year contract. For this year, and then we'd bid it out next year. And I would make a motion that we do that.
Support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim, that we enter into agreement with Grafton Farms.
Yeah.
For this year, eighty-five till, eighty-six tillable acres at.
Except.
Thirty-five dollars an acre for a total of three thousand ten dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay. Motion carried.
Hey. I think we're done.
That's the airport.
Yeah, now make a motion that we suspend the. Airport meeting and going into the finance meeting.
Support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim, to suspend the airport meeting. Purpose of going into the finance meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay.
Okay, now I get my other stuff up here. Here. Okay. Hey, go ahead and, uh, we got March cash balances, the first thing. Uh. I reviewed these with Mary Ann. Uh, everything looks really good, uh. You will notice that the COVID recovery ARPA funds. Are not in there anymore, they're closed out. Either been, they've either been spent or. Been appropriated, or whatever you wanna call it, but we don't have any money anymore. That's, that's, that's probably a good thing, we don't have that to deal with, so.
Was the interest earned that went into our general?
Yes, the interest went into the general fund, yeah. Yeah. And, uh, do you have a, a number on, I was gonna ask you, but you can prepare yourself when you get up here. Do you have the interest for the year that we created over our, on our regular finances?
Overall?
Yeah, from, from March to March. Yeah.
But it's May.
It was a March, whatever, whatever, whatever we, just wanna compare it to what we did last year, that's all, but I don't, I don't need it now, I need it when you come up, I just, just thought about.
You do.
I've done that, okay, so now.
Has Wheeler been made whole now, and theirs?
Everything's done.
New Haven's all, it's all done now.
Everything's done.
Exactly.
Yeah, Mary Ann said she finished it up.
Alright, good.
Yep. Uh, register. Or anything in the check register that you wanna talk about? Wait, ability to get it?
Okay, I emailed Sheila, there was some, some big numbers next to disnames. Who's out there, attorneys?
Those are all attorneys.
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably one of them got gay behind it.
No, it wasn't, that wasn't one of the real big ones.
No, it's that, that indigent defense ones, we already talked about.
The thing that we just refunded.
That's, uh, I have an old lawyer friend, he's eighty-some years old, been retired a long time, and, and I told him about this indigent defense fund. He about had a coronary, I mean, they were doing it pro bono, and ten cents on the dollar, you know? Now they get all this money, he said, I said, you get more money doing that than you ever did doing a regular attorney work.
Those in the states, that's the fee, right? We have.
No, they set the fee, but it's more than, more than these old guys ever made, general practice, I mean, that's.
We're trying to practice right now.
Crazy, that's all the practice they do, is this stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There aren't enough lawyers to do.
You get it, so she told you what it was, okay, you're all set.
There was greater graphic development. Two hundred fifty-two thousand.
Their, that's their, their settlement for their, uh, mileage.
What did we actually pay Deer and Company?
Deer?
Deer and Company, John Deere Company.
John Deere. Well, we have.
Thousand six hundred and.
Well, we have tractors.
Yeah, but that'd go to a dealer, not to the, unless we.
Well.
Somehow, if it's a government deal or something, maybe, I don't know.
Was it, had it been through.
Zero.
One?
For the parks.
Park, really, right? It was that government program thing.
Yeah, it says John Deere Government and National.
It's a Deer and Company, okay.
Yeah, that's why it's John Deere Company.
Cause that was the payment to them to pay for that, so. Gordon Foods, that's what the, uh, the, the jail. And, uh, Gordon is, Gordon's is the jail.
COA.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's two big bills, Gordon's Foods and Commission on Aging.
I have a question, why are, why do we pay, um, BB Renewable Energy? We paid them.
What?
We're over forty-six thousand.
BB Renewable Energy, we had to pay them, so it was probably for taxes, back tax. Settlement?
It was solar settlement, yeah.
Settlement, yeah.
It was what?
Of course.
Solar. And. It was something that, um. It was a border review, when it had to, we went back and had to pay BB one and BB two.
Uh-huh.
That's, that would be winter, but so. Solar just went in out there.
Was it, what township?
BB is North Star. Or, uh, yeah, North Star.
Star, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, the other one, um, that was the North Star Township, they had collected the money. And it was, um, it was a border review, so then it had.
BB. It's eight, eight, one B.
It's taxes.
They collected the money, and then distributed to us, and then the border review was done, so we had to give it back to them because the border review.
Need changes.
Need changes to their.
Yeah. Um, Terry, is that done like through, like a JE, cause I'm not seeing it come up on. Oh, it's miscellaneous, so it's not gonna show up for me.
Yeah. But it does go through AP, it should show up for me.
They're not a vendor.
Is it?
This is one B on there.
Terry, could you come up to the microphone? Could you come up?
Oh, we were talking, and she can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. She's a Persian.
It's all right, you're gonna stay up anyway.
Sounds awesome.
Yeah, I didn't bring everything that I was supposed to, what did you, what did you wanna know?
I just need you up by.
Okay, so there wasn't a question hanging?
She said that it wasn't in accounts payable.
It just says a vendor, it could be as a miscellaneous, but I'm just not seeing it on the vendor list.
Yes.
Anything else?
Are we? Okay, I was gonna say, are we to me yet, or? Okay.
Going into the package.
Alright.
What people have paid.
All set. March revenue expenditure activities. Gives you a whole list. That would go basically along with the check register. Give you a minute to take a look at that. Mary Ann and I have been meeting at least once a week. I think we're doing pretty well.
Now, this is the forensic audit?
Oh, no, Mary Ann is the person that's in the administration. He's really.
This is something that Chris.
Pardon?
Chris did it when.
Some of that stuff Chris did, but she's doing a lot more. But, it's all working out. Yeah. Okay. Guess we're ready to go off to. The, uh. Can I get the management, can I get, yeah, I got the check, oh, our revenue expenditure report, sorry. I do that one already?
Oh.
Alright then, we got revenue expenditure report. That's what we pay the bills.
Do they mean, or? The money we take in, does it equal the amount we spend?
Not necessarily. It's a, it's a, you don't always, every month you're taking money, you don't spend that exactly much money. Either taking more or less, and it, it's a call accruals, and it builds up over time.
And the Fund two eighty-two, the COVID recovery.
Yeah.
Um, and their total expenditures, it showed that we're overspent on that, but, I'm just.
That'd be a Mary Ann question, then. I wouldn't know.
Just our percentages, I was just looking through all the percentages, and that's what, cause it's like quite a bit over a hundred percent. One thirty-six point one-two.
Uh, I, I don't.
And the revenues are higher, that's a good thing, but.
Well, yeah.
We talked more than we expected, almost.
Well, this time of year, you're gonna get more revenues, then you have a lot more revenues and expenditures, it's tax time. Well, this time of year, you're gonna get more revenues than you have, a lot more revenues and expenditure, cause tax time. Taxes twice a year. That's when you really get all your money. And in the balance, it's, it's the budgeting that is, that'd be true. You know what you spend out of your budget. If you go look on there, you're, we should be close to. Uh, forty, fifty percent of our budget by now. If you look on the budget side of it, you'll see. Oh.
What's, I'm saying, it says we're two hundred and twenty two thousand one hundred and sixty two dollars and eight cents for, is why.
Might have been something that hasn't been spent yet then.
I hope it's been spent, cause we're spending that much.
Well, we've got too much.
We spent two hundred and twenty two thousand one hundred and sixty two dollars out of the COVID recovery fund.
Well, maybe it was Mary Ann cleaning stuff up too. I don't know. And she said it was all cleaned up, so I don't know. As of today, she said, I was talking to her about that. Okay, well, let's move on then. Investments.
Hello again. Okay, you were looking for interest?
Yeah, for the total, you know, total years of interest.
This is last year, May.
Okay.
To April, this is this year, these are those totals and that's the total combined.
Okay. Well, the total combined in two years of interest is two million, two hundred ninety one thousand, nine hundred and sixty seven dollars. And thirteen cents. Add it to the general fund. With all your marks. That's good, thank you.
You're welcome. You wanna keep that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I would, those are the things that. That really help us along on different phones and things that we can decide to spend it on or whatever, so we got a little. It's nice to have money in your pocket like that.
Yes.
Well, I call them walking around money. Alright, very good. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, March investments show the. The interest accrued is back up a little bit. We are in March rather than February, which was a, a short month. So you see those numbers come back up a little bit. Anybody have any question on the investments? Okay, bank transfers. Those are, they haven't changed much. Pretty self-explanatory with the account name now in there, but if anybody has any questions. On any of those, that is strictly the general pooled account. It's not every account, but. That's the one that we do most of our, you know, we do pay all our bills and do things like that, so. If you guys wanted to see others, we could make that happen too, but that's the, the one with the most activity. And the receipt distribution report is just. Whatever money we take in and where, where it goes and how much it is.
I'll become a settlement.
All. All, well, I'd say ninety nine percent are of the checks will be cut tomorrow.
Good, that's a good question to ask.
Yeah, it's a good question to ask.
Have you looked, Jim and I were at the MAC conference last week and they had a segment on the act, the Michigan tax. Is that something you guys have been made aware of at all?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, cause I know that, you know, it didn't go through to be voted on last year, but there's a resurgence of this again.
Right.
And the.
Not a lot of difference in what happened last year and what they are proposing for this year that I've seen.
It's just a matter of they get the signatures and, um, cause I mean, that's. That's a game changer beyond a game changer.
It would be, um.
It would come.
A lot of them don't realize what all it pays for, you know.
That's the problem, then they were talking to us about it is. You know, there's, you're.
Yeah, all the villages, all the different things that it would affect.
Yeah.
And they say they can pay for them privately, for those just who use those certain, you know.
I mean, we'd still get our funding for road patrol fires, all that kind of stuff. But they, like our, our road patrol deputy village that gets us the extra positions, that would go away. You know, and several things, I mean.
Several things.
Things that you collect all these taxes and disperse.
Fire, egg, you know, all those things, yeah. All of that stuff will go away. So, you know, you stand there.
Significant deal, that's for sure.
Yes.
We did not have the ability to, to. Get the funds we need for all these villages such as the wind turbines, the solar farms, all that. Every tax paying unit. Pay thirty percent more.
Yep.
Thirty percent. Think about that.
Or you would stand there outside your house if it's on fire and, you know, nobody would come.
They don't want any money. Just.
Um, I just had a phone call this last week from a lady that I know and she was upset. She said that, that, uh. It was the library and the library is no longer gonna get any kind of funding. Have you heard, I haven't heard that either.
No.
I've not heard it either.
Several.
Yeah, they get the penal fines in August, they get their settlement now, now.
What, let's see what she'd be talking about.
That one over at Maple Rapids, the one in Maple Rapids, the lady told her that they, um.
Anything, any funding, but they're.
I said, first.
But they might have some kind of a.
We do.
Yeah.
Funds that, county, the villages and.
No, that is not, that's not so.
I told her, I thought that she was getting the wrong information.
I raised in this county are funded very well.
Yeah, that's what I told her. I thought they were too.
Yes.
Just tell her, don't worry about it, she's being funded, because, yeah. Uh, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying it, I'm saying publicly, thirty percent. Is what is figured on all of, everything we have, all the villages and everything else. Thirty percent would not be there if it wasn't for things we have. The villages we have, or the ways to pay for the villages such as the wind turbines and the solar, solar arms. Now, I'm gonna catch heck over that from people, but. It is what it is.
Yep, and, um, you asked earlier about settlement, our settlement numbers this year are. Ball, ballpark two point nine million. That's, it's gone up from last year and that's because a lot of it has to do with, uh, we have another village now.
That's right, uh, nine one one.
Dollars are gonna be more.
Probably will drop that.
Hey, Angie, when is, uh, when are they gonna do the election for the Alma schools?
Not sure.
After five years, they would drop it.
Okay. But, uh, that's where we are as far as. In the units. We're okay.
Any questions for the treasurer?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That concludes.
And you'll have your, your auction or the, um, thing in August, am I right?
I make a motion to go back to the regular meeting.
For the purpose to pay the expenditures?
For the purpose to pay the.
In the expenditure. Or paying the bills. Good. Moved by Tim, supported by George. Go back into regular meeting with the purpose of paying the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Any additional public comments?
So George, do you wanna talk about what the meeting is, um, the seventeenth, that fourth thirty?
Yes. The meeting on the seventeenth, um, came about. Uh, through some different conversations, but. Uh, I sitting here as a commissioner. Trying to figure out what's good and what's bad and I have no clue, no clue what a storage battery is. I have no clue what it is, no clue what it does, no clue, no clue if they're dangerous, if they're not dangerous, I have no clue. Now, I can't sit here and make determinations on things that I don't even have a clue about. Alright, so fortunately, uh, we got a hold of a perf-. A professor, uh, and I think I got his name, I forget it now, I have to look it up, from, from Michigan State University. And he's. Yes, professor. And he's willing to come up here. And talk to the group of commissioners and whoever else wants to come. We're not gonna have a regular meeting, we're just gonna have an informational meeting for us all to find out what these storage batteries do and how they work and all that stuff. So that we can make informed.
Decisions.
I, I can't make an informed decision on what I don't know. I just can't. A lot of people do, but I can't. So that's Thursday, they're gonna be here, he's gonna be here and, uh, D is gonna run the meeting again. And all we're gonna do is he'll tell us what's all about, he'll answer questions. And it's basically, it's an informational meeting so that we can all hear it together and understand what it's supposed to be.
That's exactly what I was telling you too today, that I've talked with, um, Bill Henderson, who gave me the name. And they have been doing research down at Michigan State University. If you can, can you give me the name of him?
Yeah.
To me?
Yeah, I'd have to, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Find it, but, uh.
But it's just one speaker that's coming.
Yeah.
Your original.
I had two, but with their schedules.
Mm-hmm.
It didn't happen, but I wanted to get this over, over and done with, you know, as possible. So this is what we did. Oh, there we hear Thursday and we'll talk about it.
Professor from MSU that's coming.
Yes.
That's who's coming.
Yes. Yes. Find the name.
And I have sent, or Angie, I think has sent everybody a copy of some of the stuff that they are doing down at MSU Extension.
Yeah, I got that.
And so, and there's a lot there to read. I'm gonna take a copy mine off and bring it, read it and add, and write questions down and then I'll bring them and ask.
She has, uh, Dee has all the questions that were asked at that meeting. She has them all and she's gonna give the questions to every one of us. We'll all have the same questions. She, she did, she did the whole thing, so any question that was asked in that meeting will be on that list and we.
Okay.
We talk to her or we can talk. We don't want to think about questions, he'll, she'll have them for us all.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. I make a motion through here.
Well, I'll support that. Moved by Tim, supported by George, meeting is June sixth third. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. It's always me that makes.
See you tomorrow, June. I don't know why you.